It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years. So. It's been happened in the last three years.[445.56]
Please come, please come into the area if you can hear me. Come to the courtroom if you can hear me, please. Can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay, you can hear? Alright.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Bye.
All day, I don't know. Then my boss text me, she was like, hey, you gonna come in here? Maybe maybe to get someone to fill it.
What you say? Yeah. Right.
Well, just be careful not having everyone here and get this done. Let me know how I'm going to unpack my car while I'm in the courtroom and I can see my car.
Okay. Alright buddy.
I
Mayor.
Yes.
Don't let him go shower, he will.
Yeah, I must initiate right back to build.
You need to take them good.
Ah.
We're good, you need to take them good.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boone says she usually leave about seven fifteen.
Ah.
Commissioner Boone says she's got to leave about seven fifteen when she played in the game.
Okay.
I ain't heard about anybody else's time in the game.
Wouldn't be close to being finished by seven fifteen.
Don't damn know that Parks presentation, how long that did?
Yeah. Hopefully.
I'll talk to Ben.
Wrap that up and hopefully there's not a whole bunch of questions there.
Oh, oh, yeah. Just don't. So we've got Samuel Obers.
Yeah.
Application. In that memo, it's got Ronnie Davis as the recommendation, but he was on when we had it. I'm gonna change that when I do my presentation. We've got two for consideration.
Okay.
That, I just want you to know that that memo was already set up for Ronnie. We don't have books on him.
Well, they didn't have anybody Friday, so he must come in today too, because I asked.
Was it on that, um, it was on the end of the drive, when I got there?
I asked him, was anybody, did they have anybody, what she said in which way?
It's all right, we got two, two considerations. But I want you to know this house is set up.
Okay.
But I can fix it, I mean, you know, if I get it open, we can have another person. It's up to the board who does the meetings.
Uh, yeah, we got it set up.
On the, what on other?
Parry.
So I'm hoping on them.
Yeah, I hear.
We moved some of our stuff, some of the jump, and you go to that and keep moving, right?
Yeah. We ought to get another.
Yeah.
We moved off.
Who's doing it on that, who on that, someone explain that. They don't, they don't have anything, they got those violations, they had a violation. The, uh, it was a trail, but so they got the, the state of there.
They did?
Yeah. They gotta get it out too. They had to win, they need to call.
Yeah.
Let's see, there's a lot of them still there. They need to ruin Steve good. I think it's a.
Okay.
They totally. Look at that water right there, he gonna hit them guys.
Ah, look here, man. They're not, they're not commercial.
They not working. Okay.
So, uh, when they had that last hooking real over the, the park over there. Uh, it'll probably go on the basketball court. And the football. No, no. It's just, it's beginning.
Yeah. Gerald Johnson tried to tell, we can tell, you can get the rest, I'm concerned. You know, there's a park on the, that's what, we had car, park, that all football.
I'm not hiding out, please, I hope it's started in the park, like it's all around. Time's up for the other day.
We're going to get off. But hey, I haven't waited for little friends to the woods, so somehow.
Well, I'm gonna put a fence around the big ball court, that's why the bikes, the most already in the ground.
Really?
Uh. The basketball court, that should be just common sense, I can say, why would you go do all that, show the new world in golf now, and what's purpose?
Yeah, I mean, sure, get with it, but I don't.
That's what the, the show is for.
I thought, I don't know, I still don't think about.
Yeah, that's actually, uh, oh, yeah, I like it. Uh. Uh.
We're gonna try to do that, isn't it?
Yeah, they, and that, I don't know, we put them on their day, or they don't, you know, that, that part, yeah, uh, residential, not. Commercial, uh. Got, uh, Kimberly. Uh, looking for a vendor, uh, man, and. And, uh. Right. The basement, it was just about to flood now.
Basically, yeah. You can't get that open, you got to fix it the first time, then let.
I don't know, it's everything, I don't know, it's funny, yeah, I don't know why it's flooding, uh. Except for this water, I mean, even if they. Would, it was just water, it's not like, it's not worth it.
Well, I thought when they, when they re, remounted, play, redid it all fine, they made sure that wasn't going out.
I have no idea what a part of that, so it's, it's gotta be called, you know, to talk about it. Uh, if I, what, what to be, I don't know, what to be, I don't know, this. This court running, we have a courthouse, we want a cop, we want a cause. Uh. Yeah, I, I, all I know is it took forever, and when I, so, I called someone, so, after me. Uh. Of, of, this should be a very short meeting, we don't want to get a bunch of. Uh. Questions that don't mean much, Sam. Um, like, I think, Jack, the one thing that, it's, all the things, like, the, uh, Ray Park Masterland. When these things are presented, you should have two things, all three. That you can say, we're gonna do this, that, keep, get started on this now. These plans cost too much.
Hmm.
Not getting anything, downtown street advice, we're playing, they got a couple of things, but. Nothing. And, uh, sitting on the shelf. And so these, these things, once they're done. Pick out a little hanging fruit, knock it out, get it done. And, and so you're just not spending your oil, you can check those off to this. And, uh, which you don't have the money for right now. Even plan for it the next Monday, but you just don't do anything with it. Just sit.
Yeah. They can use it.
You can use it, I was talking about that, I was spending the money, you get it, these things are cheap. I'll ask Jack, what it costs to get back here. It's like in here.
Well, now, you're right, you're right, I know, we dropped, spent all the battery. Now, what, what, right, I read a book, uh, why they get the grades so high, right?
Uh, two million, uh, said, I noticed to them today. It's a right problem, you're, we, if you cut it, we're gonna have no charge.
So, don't say that, that was sidewalk.
Okay, that, I'll ask, the sidewalks may be out from the grass there. So I, I think it's just to make that, make it so the sidewalks, they have to take that grass. So, uh. I told Kim, we just said, you know, I gotta say, it's, you gotta cut it, send them a bill. When a resident, it was a hundred dollars today. Uh, a private secretary, two B, three, a four, I don't know, something like that.
Hmm.
But it's out of store, and it needs to be cut. And so, uh, if we start cutting it, we start sending it, and now they'll cut it again.
Okay, we're good. Not just building, they.
Yeah, I, I, it's been a while, boy, you say I hide it, so it's been a while, I've been.
They're like a road going outside the pool, that, that, they need, they really need to do it.
Yeah, uh, we are trying to get a meeting with DOT, I just made Jack shit out, uh, that's up. For where we can do around, uh, uh, drive around. Uh, with DOT, and, you know, point some of this stuff out. The building down nearby, that used to be Kimball's, where, uh, Robin Carter has a church.
Right.
Has been a piece of wisdom, of ash, that's a hazard. Right there, that drain on, on, uh, four twenty-one, on that corner. The, the, uh, concrete is crap.
It's, it's very, very.
Yeah, right there, there's our, before James, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, who called us, we need, that's one name, so, Jim.
Who?
DOT, I mean, they, they done with that. I think I asked communication, Jack said he had, you know, with July the eighth. So, uh. We're going to set up a, we went and moved up to meet with, uh, we've been cut for six eighty-five. Many young lady there, that was our district rep, so trying to get something set up with her.
Hmm.
And, uh, she said she'd be calling. When I met her that day, that day, and, uh, we just do a kind of, uh, a ride around. The grass. If we cut it, then they pay us.
Right.
And that's the possibility of getting, uh, say, like, the old marsh. Set the, yeah. And they can take care of it, and taking it, uh, keep it calm down. And, uh. They pay us, we pay you.
I know, but. Right there, and, uh.
Oh, wait, wait, I got some exciting news, buddy. I knew it, so I'm gonna be talking about. Friday, I talked with the girl about the, about the drum.
Yeah, right.
They got. She's gonna get in here, and they're gonna fly, you're a man, she was there, so we're gonna start to work on that something.
Okay.
I knew it's something I wanted to tell you, and I told her, I said, I was missing Austin's idea, he called me. And I said, well, dang, I liked that idea, and she didn't do it. And the Friday that I thought she was gonna be here, she was on vacation, remember I told you something that Friday?
Right.
So I didn't see her till this past Friday.
Hmm.
And, uh, soon she came in, she came to my office. And, uh, I said, yeah, I got a couple of things for you. So hopefully, as she's gonna start concentrating on the bridge.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
And one more thing, you know, if you got any sudden, you know, you got this, right now, a couple of properties, right on the. What, 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 that keeps you going, by the. The big wizard right there, you know, the bridge, you get to right there?
Yeah.
Right beside the ticket, that path, it's.
Yeah.
That DOT, they opened that up, so, they, they didn't go in that, they didn't get that opened up for that water gun.
Is, is there a drain under that?
There's a drain, but.
That, the river contracts are pulling down.
Pulling down right down inside that, that, that.
Okay, that's a part of that, uh, flood, uh, state. All of that was gonna come in to play. She got about. Around seven million dollars. And she's hoping that.
But that's the same.
Yeah, yeah, but, but she's still, it's still in our flood line.
Right.
So, the road. And so she's looking at getting everything from this coming out, uh, mortgage yield, first, um, heal, crossing, uh. Big, really down to, uh. Maxway.
Hmm.
Uh, F C X. All of that, for us, man.
Right.
So there, she's, she's got some grants waiting on some owners to come in. And hopefully. She's looking at January, February, uh, make sure we could actually physically start the system changes over there.
Right.
They have bought, they got the money, they had to buy some property, they had to buy some land. And so they got the money to that. I understand, God, we, I'm doing a, a negotiating by that land. But they do have some money to buy up to purchase.
Right.
And so, uh, they're gonna do that, there's probably going to be another park in that area somewhere. Because that water has to go into a pond.
Right.
And, uh, it won't be a big pond, but, you know, bring the size of the pond from where she's going to be. And then hopefully, uh. Between the runoff into those, uh. Silos. And dump on it, and cleaning out those ditches. We should see a, a good significant difference, you know, the, the thing is, you just might have to attack this thing. All at the same time, because when you push it one way, it's just so, so, so. And what else, you need the lowest spot in town, looking nice. We catch off.
I can tell.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause, uh, cause when it, when it. When it comes off of sixty-four years.
It's broke.
Broke. It's moved.
Kind of right at the bridge.
Yeah.
It's on my way to the road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But now I'm gonna talk to Sam. Of that silos, about planting somebody, they, they, you know, that field off. And not over, it's really, really, yeah. They couldn't ditch.
It is a buffalo.
Last week, we pulled ass, we shed it out of, of a man's yard. Cause he was having a hog. And so now it's much straight to the branch. But still, they know, you, they problem, cause once they hit the branch, you know what it does, yeah.
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 But it, and how come they don't, they love, nobody's gonna have a buffalo, huh, buffalo, find out that.
I, see. When you, when you cut. Without permits. That kinda.
Throws it off.
Yeah. And I think you just went out there, and you started clearing, clearing the land. I don't think you need any kind of permitting. Uh, and, and see, that's where code enforcement. Should, if they were really doing their job, wait a minute, how long would it still?
Yeah, it should start right there.
Yeah, soon as you see it. You have this, that, and the other, whatever's required. And, uh. I talked to that kid last week. He needs some help, so he talked to Louis about that apartment guy, he had to deal. Because we were around, it ran, what? The storm came through last. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I was, yeah, okay, we were around Thursday. And just right around. We saw some, some violence. Although.
Hmm.
Your boy down here on four twenty-one, where he used to need care of cars, I'm, what do you call this stuff?
Yeah, right, right, no.
Yeah, yeah. Sending to me now, how I ask you to look at it. So I, I don't know what's, it's not.
They weren't even starting to look at that field, well, below that car, they went to get one of the cars.
Oh, I wonder who owns that thing?
I don't know, they, they don't got a car, and they have.
Yeah, we need to find out who, who's that, who that owner, he is. And, uh. See, that's the one out, so jumping up and down, about he need water, he need water, he, he, he's an asshole.
Right.
It's the first thing you see when you hit that.
Right. Well, don't you, don't, don't y'all find the guys who doing stuff like that, and, and stop so well?
Yeah, yeah, they should, they should have, uh. But see, again, that's code enforcement, they give these visits. And, uh, you know, a warning, and then the fines start. Cause that even, well, look about the grass.
Hmm.
Uh, when I was looking at rent, when they, and they let it came about, it was gonna be a hundred dollars a day. It's like, the grass, like, I told you. Oh, he ain't living, hey, you know, about the grass.
That will be living around, around the.
Yeah. Um, that's why I paid down, and I saw that, said, uh, the Thompson boy. He cut that, he cut that grass at night, in the dark, but he got it cut.
Well, it depends on what that field right now, right, right now, what a fool you're gonna be.
The town's part of it, and the other owners, they ain't doing enough to do nothing, we, they didn't enough land to do anything, we, and. And so the town decided that they would go ahead and, and cut it, keep it, keep it cut, because, you know, we kept talking about it. Yeah, it, it was becoming a nuisance, so, uh. You know, uh, uh. Uh, he died, uh, they was studying it for. Uh, let me just go on.
Oh, 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 he done, uh. He done, I even, they, they wrong, my dog done it.
I see, he never have a problem keeping it up, he, he cut that home thing, but he said.
Yeah, he, he, he was consistent.
Yeah, every, every week, he was over there.
And then, since when, didn't nobody bother him?
No.
You know what they do, they do.
He just, he just went over there and, and got it taken care of. Now they got five guys, I can understand, I'm looking at a bit better.
They don't know what they doing.
No. Yeah. So.
So who, who, who do you have a phone, work, who that guy do that?
Uh, his name is Dylan, I, I know a bunch of spots, I've met him a couple of times, uh. Introduced so many person, and me, got here that day, and really had, had a conversation well.
Hmm.
Uh. But they're, they're old. They gotta do better. They, they, uh, what they're doing, and. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna have a conversation with Jack tomorrow, he can get to the day, just trying to be called up, assuming God, well.
Correct.
So we really just trying to be called up, um. And, uh, things that we need to get, uh. Uh, same, this fellow, this boy.
Well, you have one more question, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good, keep going.
I think I'm gonna put Jack in for, for, uh, I mean.
Well, we are, we're, we're, uh.
Hmm.
We're talking about it, we just haven't got there yet. Uh, what I need to do is. Find out. Uh, actually, I'll, I'll call this week, I'll call everybody this week. Find out who's in agreement, who, uh. Who's ready to move. And then we all, we all, we'll discuss, uh, getting a contract written up. And, uh, really, I think. October, November. Uh, November, the latest, we, we'll go ahead and, and, uh, make a plan.
Yeah, a lot of people did that, but how come you're like, did, did, did?
Because. There's several reasons I'm here today, I see what I'm.
Right.
And one thing's for sure. We rushed into the last, we're not gonna rush into this. You gotta get it right, gotta make sure that everything is going to work. And, uh. So.
Hey, all right, Ray.
Very good.
I say good.
I tell you what, people weren't lying when you say you won't get asleep.
He had two and three hours, two and three hours of clockwork, he's a. I, I give out, I give out full lunch, you got.
Nah, he's doing good, though, we got another doc, his, uh, next month, check up tomorrow, then.
I spent one month already.
Sure, that's.
Wow, there.
Well, this Friday will be the month.
Okay.
So it's a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you're a stickler.
That's what I asked, my, that, that, now he's, man, you just walked out of here yesterday.
Yeah.
He's broke to me.
Yeah, he's gonna dig, I, I, he hasn't been waiting for weeks, I'm, I'm gonna be here, sandwich away tomorrow.
Good appetite?
Oh, yeah. I tell you what, we are a little mad about the hospital, though, because they kept us five days, maybe, with no treatment, no explanation, longer there. The ones I talked about, submitting agreements, they discharged us, but like, all the nurse staff, the social worker, the lactation doctor, they're like, they're leaving today, they're leaving today. We don't know why you're here, but they kept us safe from that treatment. Making it good, so I went over there, and he, I'm like, we, we have a P G jersey upon the set for tomorrow, then, we are leaving, they're like, okay. But then we got, we're trying to see Bill, it's our sixth grand day. But then we got to try to send Bill to charge a six grand a day. So I'm I can get. Didn't do anything, so my thing's like. Is it a heads and bed type deal? Like y'all didn't have enough deliveries and y'all wanted the room still so y'all could have income? Cause I used to be a therapist and that's how it was, like. For long-term care, like for therapy, they they did wanna see a lot of heads and beds, so I'm one of that, is that scenario.
They they injured a lot of them.
I mean, it doesn't really matter, I mean, it doesn't really affect us too much, cause I mean, of course you have a magnet pocket. But the thing it took away from us is spending that first four or five days with them at home. We're staying in a small room and we had to, you know, like, we had to sit on the couch. And then turn until dead, so we had to. But he's doing great. Oliver, Oliver, Oliver Hayes.
Bring your guy to sit out for you. Why the sit out there?
What?
To sit out. I'm sure. Say your name, cigar.
Cigar, cigars.
Oh, someone did give me a cigarette, I have a sponge to go out of. I didn't hear something?
Yeah. The stogie's supposed to been passed down when he got here.
That's right.
I didn't get some.
But uh.
Someone gave me a really nice bottle of whiskey with his name engraved on it, didn't crack it open yet.
This this there there's milestones, first birthday sixteen, eighteen, twenty-one.
I did get a um. I'm a date knife blocker. So I got a custom knife getting made with his name verb on it, all kinds of name on it. Um to commemorate kind of, like my brother, his his name, his son, well, he got a nice, like a nice watch with his name engraved on it, but watching one of them.
Yeah, I I didn't think about starting to collect that, so.
I got this one, I got this in my first late show when I was eighteen, I saw him off to the beach on a night show in Orlando. It's made in North Carolina, it says it's called Micro Tech.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen these, yeah.
A three plate. Mm-hmm, yeah.
I took one of my machines out the other day and one of the neighbors was watching. Cause I was singing. Yeah, it is.
That's good.
Yeah, it comes in the shop shop and see.
Oh, that's cool. Better than pull it out.
Yeah, and shot, or Jackie put it back in shot.
Oh, that's cool. They uh they got an asset today, they're gonna start on this uh football basketball court tomorrow. They got those back and use it as a permitting.
Well, you can, I I think about that.
Well, I mean, he wasn't here, he don't know why, why didn't you even? No, they were, he said they were parking on the basketball court.
People were?
Yeah, they had a bookbag giveaway, uh actually, I knew about it, but.
Oh, over at Bray Park?
No, uh so uh.
Oh, no, I didn't know about that. I know that, like, I don't think it was this past year, I know uh uh Fisher Travis is a. His community thing was that Bray Park. But I didn't, I didn't hear about one in Washington.
Yeah, they did a five, I mean, they probably got a basketball.
I know they talk, you have to drive through the park to get some.
Yeah, I was there today, but I really didn't pay any attention to whether. You know, like, I'm sure I had like the. I saw that they have a post up for the kids on the basketball court, the new basketball doors were up.
We should uh look at putting some uh high water out there, you know? Those things that were traffic and drive. You can get some that fold down, so like we have to get maintenance out there, we fold them down. When we're not out there, we can be much more cautious and get going. That that's a, that park has a heavy park on it too, so.
I I was saying, it doesn't make a lot of sense, uh I'll, but sometimes it's just not fixed.
Yeah, I'm still figuring out, I know it's a work, I'm figuring that uh that easement out of at Rangers before that one gets repaid. Cause the sliver that that quarter is on, someone else's property, my fault is those. That quarter is weird weirdly shaped, so we should honestly probably, it's gotta be pulled up and repaid, so why don't we just repay it on our property and put up a fence? And then not have to negotiate with them. Like you put up, like you put up on one of those like barn style fences, just so we know where the line is and we don't cross it.
I I think that's a good idea.
And then, and then if we're not looking at doing the new pickleball tennis courts, we could pay that to be a side of where we could put two more pickleball courts on.
And actually, they had a national pickleball tournament. I can't think what day it was, I had to look at sports channel, it was late, about one o'clock or a morning, just sort of doing. So I don't know, I'm just thinking that's taken off.
It's they're talking about adding to the longest, uh once they start having.
Well, I should go win a great breakfast and know that.
They always said they're taking it out. They always said they're taking it out, so if I'm being the L A.
Well, it didn't make any sense, it did, I'm like.
And they call it breaking because if you think about it, it's breaking, they call it just breaking, cause all the other dance styles. Would have got offended about it. Cause you think about ballet or like, like very, like more higher class dancing would be a part of it, that break.
Somebody somewhere didn't have enough here. So whoever go metal, we all was paid, I hope you had it. Yeah, it was uh. Cracking it on gymnastics. Our uh. I was actually uh pleasantly surprised, really. With the basketball.
I thought we were McDonald's, I thought you still won, I thought we were McDonald's.
You gotta figure, we got some of these guys that are playing with us, they're playing. Yeah. I was surprised at, they haven't been changed, um um god, definitely haven't changed, um. They call the country. Give them a couple more livings and they gonna make, they gonna upset somebody. Oh, God, what way, some, I'm way.
I know there was that one gentleman, he got a lot of attention because the the country was so poor, they taught him like free athletes. And he he had no brand, he was wearing a little white t-shirt and you can't tell what country it was from.
And I didn't volleyball, which I um. Uh did my recruits. Volleyball players, when you get there, they can instantly make you a citizen and you play nationally for there.
Oh, interesting.
That was interesting, so yeah, little kid, he said she didn't know.
Well, a lot of NBA players from all other countries, that's what we did.
So, but yeah, overall, I enjoyed it.
How are you doing, Fisher Brown?
Good, I'm good.
Good, growing fast. Real fast.
But yeah, it was uh. Really interesting, the the ladies that swam that they won young lady, they won all the medals. Our uh. Swim turned swim, uh club and work. In the last Friday, they did really good.
Did uh your grandkids enjoy it?
That is with me, more than no one.
Good that they enjoyed swimming too. Too good to still have. Are we interrupting?
No, come on in.
Come on, guys.
Well. Glad to see you guys.
What are you doing, Rick?
They should all let us come do some great flanks tonight.
And taking us down memory rock west.
Thank you very much for having us. Doing great, how are you? Is it okay if we take a minute and switch and practice some flag? Sorry, partner, you ready?
Yeah, so it comes my back, I hear you, there you go.
No, it's not.
Hey, y'all doing? Everybody all dressed up tonight.
Yeah, I have a picture, mate. Well, I got you, you should come and cash for that. Everything great, I want to thank. Ironically, that's the same thing I think, thanks to you.
That's all that matters. You you you. As things move forward, did you get better, what's your thought?
Yeah, 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 probably be fine, getting ready. The only problem I have. Is I keep being the cowboy.
Well, you get out of kind of keeping eight six, eight six yard field goal.
Right.
Can you imagine that six, six yard yards? That's a lot, it's just no telling how far it can actually get. Well, the odds are. You can do it one one. That changes the game. That really, they'll they'll, if if he gets a seventy yard field goal, they'll make wheel off. Or or put some out a little bit to.
Well, I played the game, just kick field goals all day.
Well, that's pretty much. I remember the dude Smith bond in the four corners.
Yeah.
And they changed, he changed made them with a time pocket.
Yeah.
Shot clock. Cause they that take in four close down bad.
I remember those days, that's when I was at state, you used to make us so mad when you'd go to four corners. But let's just play ball, guys. Here, run the ball there.
But you ask guys to come running, man, I'm sure.
I don't really see it. So you color guard posted colors.
Be very careful. You said post with colors? Yeah, be very careful, turn around. I'm stopping for. Hold it like a, hold straight and walk into that base.
Your top, yeah, your top.
No, yeah, I really appreciate it. It was a rock, it was still, but I also told. Tim, Tim, that that M O U. And almost an hour ago, asking him to discuss with the board and he went into the executive session with the team.
Yeah.
Appreciate all your.
Well, and.
Our. Being like, when I see everything going. I mean, what? But the things. I'm all over there. I don't like that.
I'm like this. Thanks, bro.
And yeah. I need one.
That's what you said. Oh, yes. I want to. Yeah.
Basically, I can. That's. Uh. Thirty seven. And then that. The hours. I can persuade some. So then you guys. That's the first. Uh. Once enough. That's more. It's a trial. No. I haven't had all the. And I think what's what the thing is someone else. We got. I actually had to see this product.
Yeah.
And that. Morning project. And obviously, I didn't get. We gave some. Free. Got it.
I would be. You I saw that it's going. You saw the science. You have a lot of training. Right. Flagging a man also. A man.
Some. So. So the. Hell, we. Very fucking.
He about.
If you don't thought he's gonna. Probably. But uh I mean, so I can say it's. Maybe that's. I guess.
I agree.
Both teams. For. So man, now, I see you guys. Yeah, me. It's very funny. And people are. All right. They help. We need to. Yeah. You wish you had. That's all. Forty two. From YouTube. And we want to. Oh, yeah. They always. I was a dog. Facebook. Did you ask somebody at the main? Did you? Yeah, but I. Oh, okay. Yeah, obviously, but neither mind. Don't don't want. But baby, I'm like. Every people that I was like, no, I. She's not mad at that. I don't know. You might be able to share. So I can send you your English student. One, they home their. Sorry. Not saying. Bill, yeah, Bill, to be. You want to do. I'm sorry. Send me. I can't. I. You can wait. Okay. Oh, my. Okay. It's not. We have to review this. I'm like. They are. It's you know, it's they must. Okay. We only. We were on. They're not a small guy. Very hard facts. This means. I'm more in. It's like. And we come in. And it's. And then people really have to be in love. Yeah. That sounds good. Oh, no. I even. Not the other. So I. They can't. They use. Yeah.
You know how they like.
It's. Four. Yeah.
You have a good ant work? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, my.
Everybody. And so. I was trying to.
Saying they are.
Okay. I'm telling you. I mean, I'm only. Two. It's not. Thousand. A lot of things. Ten thousand. I don't. So. I had. I think. Oh, my. Oh, my.
Wow, that's. Yeah. Rob. I'll. There I go.
And. I'm standing. Yeah. And I want. You also. Oh, yeah. Well. I remember. For. The. You know. Well, I think that. If you can watch. A lot of. Somebody. You know. What's. Cause I was like. Right. We got. This is. Was. Okay. I gotta take you. You just. Really. Very. I don't. I feel for us. Oh, my. That's all. And then something. Careful. We're saying now. Yeah. Yeah. Maybe. Job. I'm like, I got a job. You know. It's like you say. Everything's. But it is. Thank you.
Number sixty nine. We got some. Side. We can.
We can. This guy came in. Very. And he's. And they. Much. But Mark. We're from that.